All right, start the meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. There is to rule over which stands one nation, honor your own individual movement of the United States. So. We have someone else, any Karen standing in for our city clerk today, but would you please take the role?
Yes, Councilmember Blair. Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Hess.
Oh, excuse me.
Around, but we'll.
Councilmember.
He gets here.
Councilmember Brooks. And Councilmember Kaminsky. And Mayor DePinto.
All right, um, can we get an agenda approval, please? My councilman Kaminsky, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes in aye? Question carries. And we got a couple of special presentations tonight, starting off with a Yelm Timberland Regional Library. Erica, um, would you please take it away?
Absolutely. Second, while I share my screen.
Erica is our local library branch manager here in Yelm. And other than that, I'll let you introduce yourself.
You can tell my first name. Hi, my name is Erica McHaleb. Here, I'm, I'm here today to talk about the Yelm Library and the Timberland Regional Library. Um, my name is Erica and yeah, I manage the Yelm branch of T R L. Um. T R L has a staff of fifteen and fifty-five. Um, we have twenty-nine public libraries that provide services to residents of five counties. Grace Harbor, Lewis, Mason, and Urban. T R L is a county rural library business funded primarily by property taxes and revenue from the number amount of nearly twenty-five point nine million per year. New in twenty twenty-two, we debuted several unique items in our collection. I just wanted to highlight one today real quickly. We have, um, check out Washington kits. These are explore Washington bags that include binoculars, nature pamphlets, and a Washington Discover Pass. Kits are funded and curated by the Washington State Parks Foundation, W S E C U, Washington State Libraries System, and the Office of the Secretary of State. More kits are available on our website, and they include stargazing backpacks, environmental education backpacks, explorer forest backpacks, birding backpacks, light therapy lamps, and musical instruments. T R L also developed STEM backpacks from a seventy-five hundred dollar grant awarded by Capital STEM Alliance. The goal is to provide caregivers in rural and underserved communities the resources to support their children's early math development. Age range for these is three to six. iPads are available in all twenty-nine of our locations. They're available to use while you're in the library. You can explore our online collections, including reading newspapers, magazines, or ebooks, watching films on Canopy, listening to audiobooks on Libby, and learning something new with LinkedIn Learning, participating in Zoom meetings, or even playing games. These are first come first served and do not have holds. Tools that are available at all of our libraries include access to Wi-Fi daily, six A M. to midnight, computer use, which is walk-up and online reservations, printing, scanning, faxing, and cloud and play in full color. All patrons receive a forty-four dollar print credit on their accounts at the start of month for free printing. You can also remote print where you can upload your documents from anywhere and release your print at any T R L location during library hours. Libchat is also available where you can chat with library staff on our website, t r l dot O R G, Monday through Saturday from nine A M. to five P M. Or you can email your questions to asklib at t r l dot O R G. We also debuted new children's formats, playways, launchpads, and box books. This technology is to help gap the bridge the gap in learning how to read. Launchpad tablets are loaded with apps, videos, storybooks, and games for kids. They're a hundred percent secure, not have internet. Um, playways require no downloads or internet. Um, simply plug in headphones and listen to your book. These are available for all ages and reading levels. And Fox Books are the world's first audio book that live in print books. They have a permanently attached box reader that transforms an ordinary print book into an all-in-one read-along. Children just press a button and listen and read without the need for computers or tablets or CDs. Summer library program is coming up. This runs from June first through August thirty-first. You can receive a free book for participating. It's for all ages, not just kids. There's three easy steps. You just visit any of the T R L locations beginning June first and receive your free book. And an activity log, you track ten activities using the paper log or digitally. And then when you complete your log, you can collect your certificate of completion and prizes whenever you're done. This is available in English and Spanish. In twenty twenty-two, T R L distributed over eleven thousand books, held over six hundred and fifty programs, and had over ninety-six hundred attendees. We have a treasure trove of online resources. I just want to highlight a couple of these. Press Reader has access to more than seven thousand of the world's top newspapers and magazines from over a hundred and twenty countries and sixty different languages. You can read them online, or you can download them. You can save publications to read later, or listen to the content out loud and instantly translate up to nineteen different languages. And newspapers includes three months of back coverage. Canopy is a video streaming site, kind of like Netflix. Um, you can stream over thirty thousand indie and classic films. You're allowed eight plays per month, and then unlimited plays if you're using Canopy Kids. Consumer Reports is a magazine website that has fine guides, professional reviews, and user ratings. This is just a small list of what we have available, read with your library card, and more online. We also have many early learning resources. For a reader, it's a keepsake to remember a favorite book title shared throughout your child's preschool years. Copies are available in English and Spanish at all location. We have Storytimes and bilingual Storytimes. Our in-person Storytimes and our learning playgroups are back in our libraries. Join our experts and Storytime presenters for songs, music, movement, books, and activities for the whole family. The Book Library has over eleven hundred ebooks for grades K through six, including books in Spanish and French. And ABC Mouse offers a comprehensive online curriculum for children two through eight. Interactive learning activities to improve reading and language arts, math, beginning science, social studies, art, and music. And this is available with home access as well. Finally, I wanted to share with you a twenty twenty-two overview of the year and what we've been up to specifically. First, a little numbers. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we had a total circulation of over a hundred and eighty-one thousand, um, seven hundred and one items. That's including physical and digital items. We signed up about three thousand new patrons and have a total active patrons of about seven thousand. When I say active, I do mean that they are actively using their library cards to access services. We had some seventy-six hundred Wi-Fi sessions on our computers. Some notable projects that we worked on in twenty twenty-two include refreshing some of our physical spaces, including our children's area, which you see pictured. Um, where we doubled the size of our play area by simply moving some shelving around. We also added flexible seating, a coloring table, an iPad station with educational games, put in a new rug, added a dedicated computer station so folks can keep an eye on their children and get work completed at the same time, and added new toys. We also refreshed our workroom areas, adding sit-stand desks, ergonomic monitor stands, new chairs, and we just decluttered extensively and maximized our footprint as much as possible. We also restarted in-person programming in twenty twenty-two. We have a roster of programs now that include early learning programs such as Storytimes, Free to Play Time, and Music and Movement. We have adult programs like A R P Tax Aid available to all income levels and ages. An Adult Coloring Club incoming in May, a gaming program for adults. So we also have teen tabletop games, D and D, and video game programs for youth. In twenty twenty-two, we relaunched our in-person summer library program with a partnership with the City of Yelm. We hosted Playtime in the Park for the first time at Long Meyer Park, where kids were able to play with bubbles, stomp rockets, um, ring toss, sidewalk chalk, and much more. We also received a two thousand dollar grant from Save the Children to supplement this program and others. I look forward to continuing that this year. All in all, we've been busy circulating items, helping people access resources, and engaging with our community. Step up, I'd welcome any questions.
Councilmember Grossman. They can check out a Northwest Office Pass or Discovery Pass to go hit the park.
Yeah, so it's included with some of our specific backpacks, the bird backpack, and, um. We check out Washington backpacks, but yeah, there's a discovery pass in there that they can use.
Councilmember Smith. I was just curious, so after COVID, when you got back to the in-person, like the storytelling, are, are they coming back for that? I mean, is it still enough?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We're actually looking at our meeting room and, uh, oh, maybe not too many more.
Okay, good. Any other questions from council? Thank you, Erica, that was a great presentation. Alrighty, moving on. Uh, we have our American Red Cross proclamation. And Larry from the American Red Cross is here to receive it. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read it. If you want to say a few words, you're more than welcome to. All right, so the proclamation, American Red Cross Month. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March. All right, can we? Thank you. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we saw the humanitarian spirit of Yelm reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no, no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is, is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Yelm. Simple acts of kindness to the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than a hundred and forty years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing an emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by wildfires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and was sickle. Single cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers. Through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid, C P R, to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. And whereas support, whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it, and ask everyone to join in this commitment. And now therefore be resolved that the mayor Joe DePinto hereby claim March twenty-third as, excuse me, March twenty twenty-three as Red Cross Month. And encourage all citizens of Yelm to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Signed in the City of Yelm motion is fourteen to date of March twenty twenty-three. Please.
Yeah, Larry, could you just pause one second? We just need to reboot the computer behind Councilmember Smith real quick to make sure we're recording in live. So that piece was not.
We'll have to hear him do it again, too. We don't start all up.
Please, please hold us thoughts. Yes.
Could I get a picture?
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah, that's a great idea.
Lynn's gonna take.
Oh, Lynn's gonna take the picture. So we're not just, uh. Just hold off just a minute, sorry.
So next time we see Lynn, we'd probably be like, something's not working.
No.
Was it just for the proclamation?
Yeah. I believe so. Are we okay, Lynn?
I don't. Of course, everything is great.
Okay.
I want to grab my camera.
Yeah, just yell, Lynn, if.
Are you taking the picture?
She's going to get her camera. I think she's making sure it's still working. All right, we're live streaming here. We'll just pause here for a second. Consider this proclamation and. What's gone down?
We just need the need to be met. I gotta touch that.
Ashley did.
Not the best tech here.
Yeah, social media, you can do that.
We're good.
We think it's perfect.
All right. Don't think we need to re-read the proclamation. Let's get a picture with the council as well. Um, do you want to sit down?
It says.
And okay. Alrighty, yeah, please. I guess Todd wants his hand up. Yeah, yeah.
Recommend.
One at a time.
One of the multi.
All right.
He's good.
Thank you so much for coming. Absolutely, please.
Thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you, Mayor, thanks for council members. My name's Larry Blysh. I'm a community volunteer leader and elected official liaison for Red Cross. Special guest here, Mr. Red Geikus is a board member of ours, who happens to live in your beautiful community. So, um, thank you for reading Clara Barton's words. That was very special. I'm sure I don't have to introduce the Red Cross to any of you. It's probably one of the most recognized names universally. In fact, you only have to turn on television at night when there's a disaster, and you'll probably see all the red coats out there, and that's the Red Cross providing humanitarian care. But you probably didn't realize most of our work is done right here in the communities. I would say anywhere from three to six times per night, new disaster action teams out in communities. Doing the same type of humanitarian care that we do on a national basis for hurricanes and everything else. Most of the times it's for floods or house fires. And in fact, we're going to have a special event here in Yelm late next month. Right? Called Place the Alarm, so we're going to be installing smoke detectors throughout the community, and that's for fire prevention in homes. You probably aren't aware of the fact of a few other things, though. Every eight minutes, there's an emergency in this country where the Red Cross responds. Every eight minutes. Every two seconds, there's a need for life-saving blood for somebody. That means we, as an organization, need to collect thirty-eight thousand blood donations on a daily basis to meet that need. Because the Red Cross supplies forty percent of all the blood in America. Pretty amazing. You probably also weren't aware of the fact that all those red jackets, all those vests out there, um, responding to disasters. Of all those people, ninety percent of them are volunteers. Like Brad and myself are volunteers. In fact, I just came back from Hurricane Ian in Florida for two weeks. I volunteered down there. You're also probably not aware of the fact that every dollar donated to the Red Cross, ninety cents goes right back towards humanitarian care. But it doesn't go towards paying salaries or anything of that nature. It's for supplies, and I saw it in action, so it really works. So I just wanted to lay the groundwork there in case any of you still play Trivial Pursuit and you're asked one of those questions. Answer, all right? I'm also asked oftentimes, how can people support the Red Cross? And I always say it's three ways. One, donate. Simply go to our, um, redcross.org website. Ashes King, we always need money because we're not supported by the federal government or independent organization. Number two, we always need blood. Same site, go to that organization website. Mine, where blood donation drive is going on in community and donate. And three, you can always volunteer to look for people with all sorts of talents. Again, Brad is one of our wonderful board members. We always look for qualified board members, so. Thank you very much. Brad, would you like to say any words?
Uh, just that I've raised my children in this community. Um, my wife teaches, uh, here in the, uh, in the Yelm School District. Um, I volunteer, as Larry mentioned, because nineteen years ago, I got a phone call in the middle of Iraq. I'm saying that my wife, um, it was a Red Cross message saying that my wife was having some medical complications with our, uh, with our soon-to-be-oldest son. And so the Red Cross is what got me on a helicopter, that got me to Baghdad, that got me on an airplane, that got me to Baltimore, that got me to Yelm. And so, uh, I've been on the board for six years, and, uh. Everyone's got a different reason for, for volunteering, but, uh, but it's driven by people stepping up and volunteering. So Ashley, thanks, the Sound the Alarm campaign. You'd be amazed, uh, at the communities that I've been in across the South Sound area where people don't have a single smoke alarm. It's functional or that exists in their entire house. And if you think about all the little old crud moments when maybe there's a little bit of smoke, and it might be the life and death, death difference, um, what, what you're doing, Ashley, is, is really, really cool. And if anyone else has the ability, time, energy to, uh, to help out with that effort, it's a, it's a very cool effort. So thanks, Mayor, for your, you know, for your support, council, for, uh, for taking the time to listen to us flap our gums here. But, uh, it's a pleasure to be a part of Yelm.
Thank you again. If there's any questions we can answer, be happy to.
Council? Thank you for the Trivial Pursuit answers and. Service.
Anytime, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. For public comment, is there anyone in the public here? Thank you again for. Thank you, um, anyone else in the public that would like to speak or address council? Name a line. All right, moving on. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, we have the February twenty-third. I started, why am I saying twenty-third all of a sudden? February twenty twenty-three, check register and position summary. Uh, is there a motion to approve? Of course.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Sir, second.
Second.
My councilmember Kaminsky, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
He's, he's in aye. Question carries. All right, moving on to new business, Regional Housing Council and our Local Agreement Amendment. Wow, is that you? All right, step up.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Uh, just a quick recap of what the Regional Housing Council is and what it does. The Regional Housing Council was created with the primary purpose to leverage resources and partnerships through policies and projects, promoting equitable access to safe and affordable housing in Thurston County. Thurston County and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and Yelm formally adopted the interlocal agreement to formalize the R H C in February of twenty-one, and amendment number one was adopted in April of twenty-one. An elected official from each jurisdiction, supported by a designated alternate, serve as the voting members to the R H C. The pooled funding resources are used to house low-income individuals who earn sixty percent below the county median income, including individuals with disabilities or behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens. People who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, unaccompanied youth, and domestic violence survivors. Amendment number two has five key elements that are, uh, being, uh, changed in the, in the new draft. The first one is to incorporate new whereas statements and language to incorporate the Olympia Thurston County I L A into the R H C. And identify the Olympia and Thurston County Home Funds as under the decision-making realm of the R H C. Number two, create two advisory boards, an Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and a Homeless Services Advisory Board. These boards will make recommendations to the R H C. Number four. Then, oh, number three. Establish the chair of the advisory boards as ex officio members of the R H C. Number four, eliminate the requirement that jurisdictions take separate action to approve projects to be funded with substitute House Bill fourteen oh six funds. It does require that the county commissioners not deviate from the recommendation provided by the R H C regarding the allocation of substitute House Bill fourteen oh six funds. And number five, allow the lead agency to transfer programmatic or administrative functions to a partner jurisdictions on an as-needed basis. Questions?
This is something we discussed here at our say session. I believe, um, I talked about some of the questions that council had as well. Um, at this point, look for a motion. Councilmember Kaminsky.
Um, I move to authorize Mayor, uh, DePinto to sign the Regional Housing Council Interlocal Agreement, amendment number two.
Sir, second. Councilmember Brooks, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any votes in aye?
Aye.
Question carries. Alrighty. And council, moving on to, uh, standing council committee reports, starting with safety. Oh, just, excuse me, did I miss something? Hold on. Excuse me, council, moving on to old business, number seven. We do have a, this is a very important, um, item on the agenda, our public hearing on proposed annexations. No action's going to be taken, believe this today, but we are briefing, please. So we do have a hearing we're going to ask for. Oh, hey, yep, sorry, excuse me, I do need to. Because it's a annexation, there are some rules and regulations we have to follow, including, um. Um, opening the public hearing at exactly six twenty-five. Um, we're going to have the hearing, the staff report, we have, uh, public comment, and we'll close it, public hearing after that. So we're on to the staff report, Gary, please.
Thank you. Good evening, council, finally got a name tag. The official. So, uh, I'm here. Um, Marion would be here. She presented this to you guys a couple of times, but she's on vacation in Mexico, so, um. These annexations are really small in size. I'm going to just read the addresses, the acreage, and what we propose to rezone them as. And then if you have further questions, um, we do have a map in your packets. But again, because you've seen this a few times, I don't want to belabor it with a big long staff report. So, uh, these are six separate parcels that we want to annex. Uh, the first is at ninety-eight nineteen Grove Road Southeast. It's twelve and a half acres. And once it's annexed into the city, it will be rezoned to a moderate density residential, which is six units per acre zoning. The second one is one oh four three Grove Road Southeast. It's five acres, and it will also be rezoned to, um, R six. The third one is at one five oh six State Route five oh seven. It's nine point seven acres, and when we annex it, we will rezone it to a low-density residential, which is the R four designation, or four units per acre. The fourth is one six three four five Railway Road Southeast. It's about ten and a half acres, and, um, it will be rezoned to R six. The fourth is just a parcel number, it doesn't have an address yet on Morris Road. It's five acres, and it will become an R four zone. And, uh, that's the fifth, I apologize. And the sixth is also just a parcel number on Vansel Road, and it is ten acres, and it will be rezoned to R four. So altogether, uh, this is about forty-five acres that the city would be annexing. As I said, six different parcels, individual parcels. And at the zone that they will be rezoned to, it would, um, allow for about two hundred and twenty new residential lots. Yes, sir.
Could you repeat that railway address again?
Sure. One six three four five Railway Road Southeast. And that's a three, four acre property.
The owner of that property is seeking to annex?
Yes.
Interesting. Another owner of that property.
Okay.
Never heard anything about one of the annex.
Well, I actually don't know him, so.
You have to card.
But, yeah, the, the applications have been in for quite some time, so. And like I said, it's been to council a couple of times. And the reason that we are back, you might be wondering, because we will be back again. Uh, first of all, annexations are just really process-oriented, kind of complicated little. Actions, and in fact, each one of these has to go to the, uh, Thurston County Boundary Review Board. That's the next step, and the packet alone for each parcel is about a hundred pages. So it's like six hundred pages documentation to annex six properties. Which is why going forward, we want to try to do annexations in larger groups and not just do small end-of-theeble ones. But, um, so that is the next step, and the reason we are here is because the Boundary Review Board requires us to have a hearing where the city basically says, yes, we agree with taking these forward and sending them to the Boundary Review Board. Um, and it has to be done, um, via a public hearing with a motion to approve. And once approved, then when I get the minutes of this meeting, that will satisfy the Boundary Review Board's, um, requirements. And so, once at the Boundary Review Board, it will sit there for about forty-five days because they have a mandatory comment period. In case any other jurisdiction might have an issue with the annexations. And in this case, that would mainly be the county, and we don't see there really being any issues, but state law requires us to do that. And once it comes back from the Boundary Review Board, I will be back in front of you with an ordinance asking you to do the official annexation, and that would be the end of the process.
Gary, do we need an approval from the, like a vote from the council tonight to approve this? To go to the.
Yes, to go to the board. Um, and yeah, that's, um, that's the last requirement we need to satisfy Boundary Review Board's requirements.
Thank you, Councilor Smith.
At a high level, for like people listening, can either you or Cody, just kind of, at a very high level, what is, what does that mean for the city? If somebody gets annexed in, what, what does the city have to do? Not detailed, but just kind of.
Okay, well, first of all, these parcels are in the city's urban growth area, which is actually the county. We can't annex anything that's not in the urban growth area, so that's the area that we have already said in agreement with the county. We can't annex anything that's not in the urban growth area, so that's the area that we have already said in agreement with the county. It's, you know, I call it the future annexation area. I mean, the process we're going through is, is, is the process you have to go through to bring it into the city. And what happens when it comes into the city is it will be rezoned right now. The urban growth area is owned at one unit per five acres, so. From the standpoint of development or providing housing, there's really, you know, that's not an urban. Level of zoning, so I guess what's in it for the city is that, once annexed, of course, we are going to get housing. Development proposals.
What about on the flip side? What do the residents get services?
Very little changes, you know, and that's the thing. A lot of people believe that being annexed in the city, uh, their property taxes are going to go up. They actually go down. Because there's a county road tax, which is very hefty. The, there are some minor changes in utilities in the way that the city. Assesses taxes on like cell phones and cable providers and things like that, so some of that goes up. But generally, in almost any study I've done on annexation, it might cost a property owner ten to twenty dollars. City when you can all those things out. The services themselves won't change at all. They're still. Even if there were. You know, it would go from technically county sheriff to the city of Yellam, but we have, I certainly do have mutual aid agreements. Um, so. People won't see a difference. I, I guess maybe there could be a difference if there were property theft or something that required a detective. Um, that's about all I can think of. They'll have the same fire, the same garbage. It won't look any different.
Or, um, if they have a private well, let's say, are they required to switch over to our own water system?
No, so the way that works, and, and the same in the urban growth area as it isn't. If they had a well or a septic that failed, that was within two hundred feet of an existing city water sewer line. They would be required to hook up, but that's also the case in the urban growth area.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, this time, uh, we're gonna ask for public comment. Um, anyone here in the public want to comment on this? Yeah, person, no. All right, we're gonna ask from the online participants by show of hand. There's probably no one online, I'm guessing. Makes it easy. All right. Yes, absolutely.
Um, my question, I guess, is for the council and the mayor as far as.
You state your name, please.
My name's Tracy Wood. I, I live in the city of Yale. Do you need my address? I'm, I'm curious how many. Uh, you said forty-five acres. How many actual new? Uh, houses is that? How many new residences?
Well, so based on the acreage and the zoning, it has a potential for about two hundred and twenty new. Residences, units, if you want to call it that. And R six, I, uh, apartments. Um, the R four, it's gonna be single family.
I'm just curious about, and I haven't been paying attention to what you guys are talking about, and I'm curious about the traffic impact. And if you guys have considered that and have a, you know, a plan to. To yield that.
In reference to the traffic, uh, Mr. Wood, in reference to the traffic, as you know, uh, we have the five-ten loop. Five-ten loop, we do not control. That is a state item since about twenty fifteen. It's been, uh, approved. Money allocated, everything's been there for whatever reason, and yes, I'm going to put it out there. For whatever reason, the state of Washington. Keeps pushing it off, keeps pushing it off, keep pushing it off. But that is by next year should get, uh, they should be put, uh, shovels in the ground.
Depending on how the session goes.
Right, but it's the fact that we've already got the money allocated. Everything, uh, according to Representative Barkis, everything is already there. That will take approximately one-third of our traffic. That'll be the northern, uh, element, which means you'll have access to. Uh, for all the residents coming into that area. We are also, uh. Being on the Public Service Committee, I am asking that the Public Service start looking at the, uh, movement corridor, the southern. Loop, trying to find a way to get that and get it so we can start, uh, pushing one-third of the, uh, traffic off to there. Yes, we do have the plan. Yes, we're working on it. Uh, the big challenge is that. It costs money. And we need to try to figure out how to allocate those funds and make it happen. And it comes down to whether we're going to hold off on that southern loop of saying, okay, when a developer develops. And make the road in, or maybe all of a sudden just go. Let's go ahead and build the road. Developers coming, and then we just ask them to reimburse as, uh. As they do the development there, because there's already services and things like that. Yes, I understand the concern. Yes, I understand. We have. But we also have to realize that our five-ten loop. Since twenty fifteen, that's been a stated, state of Washington issue, and I will tell you, I, as a council member and also a resident. Very frustrated and the state is all in the process of building the, uh. State Road eighteen, or twenty-nine. Uh, Diamond and that whole area. Approved, where that was brought up, approved, and allocated. So, the only thing I can say is, start writing, start telling, you know, writing Washington Department of Transportation. And our legislators start filling up their inboxes, and letting it be known that we are not gonna. Wait any longer, that they keep pushing this off. It is front and center with me when we're looking at this development.
And I appreciate that. I spent a lot of time myself on that, exactly, but my concern is, is. Uh, rezoning this and adding that many more residents in a situation where, as you said yourself, it's pretty unclear exactly where we're gonna go. As far as the, the state's decision on where they're gonna spend that money, and as you just mentioned, they're already allocating it to other highways. So with that being said, are you planning on bringing more people into town with the hopes of getting something accomplished?
So, it's just before I go to Councilman Richardson, I do want to say that, um, there are requirements for traffic impact studies that are done with. Um, especially larger, um, not parcels, but developments. Um, Gary, is there a, for single-family homes for a part?
I don't believe so, but for, um, like traffic impact sites, like a commercial or a big residential. It's, they're required for any project that generates more than twenty trips a day. That's determined by the, the traffic manual that basically categorizes uses and, and, and how many trips a subdivision will generate, that kind of a thing. And so, yes, they also have traffic impact fees. So it's, um, about fourteen hundred dollars for every peak hour trip. And that, now we're getting into the weeds, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just saying that projects do. Have to pay money to offset traffic impacts, and we can require and have been looking at, you know. Different ways to have developments pay into like some future plan roundabouts and things like that. But I do also acknowledge that, that, you know, traffic is already an issue, but so is housing. You know, we're, we're well short of our housing needs too, so we've got these things that are sort of colliding. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Richardson first, and then I'll go to back to us.
I appreciate that question, Tracy. Um, I think I kind of asked you this question earlier about the traffic impact analysis, because I was concerned about traffic as well. But then you said, mentioned, I think Cody had mentioned, there's a process to where it goes to Thurston County first. And then, or how does that work? Can you explain that whole traffic impact analysis? I don't want to put you on the spot, but this would be the question everybody wants to know.
Well. Okay, so when someone does.
Yeah, so when someone does a TIA, it has, it'll have mitigation strategy, so if it does create like a traffic jam and they notice that, it'll be. You have to add a roundabout here, and you might have to add a second lane, or you have to make a right turn lane or add a bypass three. Um, we've also, one thing we're doing for some of these developments coming in, we have our southern loop plotted now. So like if the, the Morris Road, uh, division that's getting, that might get annexed, and we have them dedicating right away. To allow us to start building a road that'll come from Morris Road over to Tomma Boulevard, over to five oh seven, over to ninety-third. So we started doing that in these developments, and you'll see that when this, if these properties come to fruition. You'll see on the development plan, they're having to dedicate right away for us to put a road in there. So that's how we mitigate on our end, but also the traffic impact analysis they do on their end to. Have mitigation strategies that they need to do to help out with the traffic they're creating.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Councilor Blair.
Oh, I know where to ask the public comment. I was wondering.
I'm still looking.
Okay. Would you repeat that address? On railway?
Yeah. I can find it here.
One six three four five?
Yes, one six three four five Railway, Railway Road Southeast.
And the only process in which this would have happened is that the owner applied to be annexed, correct?
That's correct, you can. I mean, the city, I guess, can annex properties. When you know, get in on this.
What I would, what I would like.
Oh, these were, these are not proposed by the city or anybody other than the property owners.
The property owners right here.
I'm sitting right here, and I never applied for nothing.
Well.
Out of my, out of my address, you know, on the.
Let me see.
That's my question.
Yep, we'll find out, sir.
I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We will. I have the petitions here, and they're in the packet, so let's. I think the address on here shows is that address, but it's a parcel that's landlocked behind it.
There is a parcel behind me, yes.
Yeah, and so the address.
That's, that's Bo, whatever his LLC is.
Yes, and that's what I believe were, is that property, but it comes out as that address because there's no address associated with that property, since it's landlocked.
I think it's landlocked. We will verify. That guy's been pulling shenanigans on me since I bought that property twenty years ago. And he is my big co. He's put me on there.
Well, yes, I think what, I think what Cody's saying, and I'm not really.
I understand what you're saying, dude.
But, but it sounds like because this property didn't have an address that they.
Right, they want to use mine, so I don't want mine in it.
Yeah, so the actual property address is one six four one eight Middle Road Southeast, Yellam. And it's Daphne Anderson is the property owner, and it's a landlocked property.
Yeah, whatever you have, I don't know about. I, I'm, yeah, I bought, I bought this whole thing from him. And he was trying to tell me that what they wanted me to do is give him a, a, an addendum to say that I'll give him back the property after the loan went through. But what he did is he come up and he put a boundary line adjustment in here, which I agreed to at the point of time, and what he did, what, what, he, he screwed things up. Because this was a seven point six, seven point eight piece. This is a three-two, and mine's a three-six.
This is, yeah, three-four-four is what this one's showing, three point four-four.
My deed says three point six.
Okay.
And that should be three-two, because the whole thing was seven-eight to begin with. And he come in and had, had me put, he put that boundary line adjustment, then he sent me to my lender. And when my lender come back and refinanced everything. I went to get that, because it was, because he had a different proper for, um. Tax number, parcel number put on that particular piece, and I told my lender that, hey, you know, that tax part was not mine. You just did this one. They really get upset, and I definitely lost my property over that crap. Then he come up with another one where he wanted me to sign us to get the hell off my property, because he was trying to shut my well down and everything else. My septic would have been off my property, and you guys goon.
Sir, could you state the name for the record, please?
My name, oh, my name is Alfred Fournier, F O U R N I E R.
Thank you, sir.
And I've been in that property for twenty years.
Thank you, sir. We will verify, though, that it isn't.
Yeah, so what, I mean, we'll make sure that it's, yeah, if, if we need to just pull the address off and use the parcel number and make sure that it's distinguished from yours.
Please, yeah, please, because I don't need, you know, something coming up and going, wait a minute, I didn't sign nothing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, later, later day, I may want to annex with some other people, but right now.
For sure.
We don't.
Sure. And it, Gary, thanks to make sure, um, it is not, just to verify for council, um, it is not his property that we are. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember S.
Um, I want to come back to Mr. Wood's concern and reference to, are we thinking about the traffic congestion? Yes, I, I can't speak for all seven. I can speak for myself. I do think of that. And I also want to make sure that it's understood, just because it gets annexed, just because. It's property that's also put into the city, and it can also turn to two hundred some odd homes. Does not mean that the next day, there are now two hundred plus people on the road, two hundred plus kids in the school district, two hundred plus people there. It takes time for that to occur, and that's why hopefully with, uh, the. Public Service Department, the Plan Department, we go through that process and manage it appropriately, so we can make sure that things are there. And as you've heard, uh, Director Colt put, we are working on that southern loop. And I believe, in my opinion, once we get the northern loop and the southern loop put together, that'll be almost two-thirds of the traffic taken off the roads. And hopefully, the roads will be in, in such order that we can also move the truck traffic. Off of it and be able to have our central business district to where it's just cars and walking, and no longer the. Trucks going through that area, so we can now have a flow of traffic that works more.
Councilor Crossman.
Um, the UGA was developed quite a while ago. Was traffic a part of that development process?
They decided what the UGA is gonna be.
Right, yeah, and the future zoning, because all those, all that parcel is future zoning.
A little bit before my time in the nineties, I believe, when they came up with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm quite certain that there wasn't, oh, um, you know, rigorous, uh, traffic study done at that time, and of course, at the time that that was. Designated as UGA, almost about one-fifth the size that is now, probably weren't anticipating the kind of issues that we do have.
So, traffic's not a part of, when they develop those zonings, they're not considerations.
I mean, the main, the main thing that went into the first designations of urban growth areas were, obviously, it has to be adjacent to the city. And you have to be able to provide. You know. Sewer, water, things that you can provide within twenty years. Um, there is, there is a higher level. I, I want to call it an aspirational. Mandate for concurrency, where you're supposed to be able to accommodate traffic and other things like that when you do annex. Um, that's one of those things, though, again, when you're in a really high-level planning process, it's pretty difficult to, to really. Make those kinds of predictions, you know, and this is thirty years ago. When, since that UGA was designated and. Things have changed quite a bit.
Any other questions, comments? All righty then. We will go ahead and, uh. And take the vote before the public hearings closed. Do we close the public hearing first?
Are we amending it, though, to make sure that his address is removed from that? Because I'm looking at it, and it has that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. Um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I, I would recommend, like, we do have a proposed motion, and then I would say just, and. Amen. Parcel identified as number four, to just include the parcel number and not the address.
Okay.
You get the that?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know the people behind me. They bought that little piece of land there from Bo, and he wanted to develop that. So I think he might be trying to go around a back door or something like that.
I, I don't believe so, sir. This, this, this one is just that one piece parcel, correct? It doesn't include his parcel. Okay, yeah, so that the record does show that, but we will, um, specifically, um, point that out, though, in this, so there's no confusion whatsoever. Absolutely, sir. All right, um, at this point, unless there's any further comments, we're gonna close, Councilor Blair.
I don't think it's appropriate to. I don't think the infrastructure's ready for it. I don't think it's gonna be ready for it in time that this will be developed. And given the questions regarding that property, there's no way.
Any other further questions, comments, before we close the public hearing on this? All right, we are gonna close public hearing at six forty-eight. And at this time, um, if council wants to approve the annexations, um. Again, we've done this for. Since early last year, I believe, um, the process. Um, lots of notice and lots of public hearings on all of these, um, same things said over and over again. But we do need to move to, if the council approves, would move to approve the annexations, from staff. Send a notice of intention packets to the Thurston County Boundary Review Board, prepare the annexation ordinance. Um, if council wants to do it with the, um, suggested amendment, it will, again, it will be parcel number four to include the parcel, not the address. The motion would be everything on there with the, excuse me, um, with amendment for parcel number four to include the parcel. And not the address. With that being said. Is there any motions? Councilor Kaminsky.
Hey, I move to approve the annexations, instructing staff to send a notice of intention. Package to the Thurston County Boundary Work Review Board and prepare that annexation ordinance. With the amendment to property number four to.
Parcel number four.
Will number four on the list refer to it as parcel only and not this, this incorrect address for Mr. Fournier.
Is there a second? Second, my councilor S. Is there further discussion? Councilor Blair.
Well, what it sounds like to me is the property boundaries on that property are in dispute. What it sounds like to me is the property boundaries on that property are in dispute, it's not appropriate with that annexation.
At all, at all.
Um, well, Gary, do you want to make sure that, to address that comment, um, or would you, could you address the comment? Well, well, this is the first I've heard that there were any boundary lines in dispute, so. Um, I mean, I think what happened is because this parcel didn't have an address, the other address was just pulled into it whenever they did the search. I can't verify that because, um, I didn't do the, this particular report. But property boundaries will be verified with the boundary review process. And if they're not accurate, they won't approve it exactly.
Is there any further comments, questions on this?
So, from my understanding, from what Gary said, um. It's going to go on to another verification.
Yes.
To make sure that his property is intact. Because that's what I need to know, because I'm having, seeing what I've heard and, and what I've listened to, I'm hesitant. And it shows me that maybe there was some discrepancy or maybe there was something missed. Um, so then because of that, I have a hesitance to follow along and I'm glad he showed up today because I'm listening and. I'm just trying, I want to make sure that there's not just one process, there's another process to verify what is done is doing.
There's even more process than, there's the Boundary Review Board and then it has to come back to the council for final approval.
Okay.
Um, this won't go into effect after the Boundary Review Board is done, because we have to then come back to you with an ordinance saying, okay, it's passed Boundary Review Board. Now, do you really want to annex? And so it won't happen until the next time we come to council.
Got you, because I, right.
Can't happen until we come back.
I'm just hesitant on voting a yes, because if my yes puts him in a bad situation, then I'm going to have issues with myself. And I managed to have been smarter about, about this, so that's what I need to know is that, you know, the city and, and Garrett, I think you have been doing as best you can and. And, um, so I, I just want to confirm that there's going to be multiple processes and even at that, it'll come back to council for final.
It's correct.
Councilmember Crossman.
Well, these properties get surveyed before they annexed in to make sure.
Well, they have legal descriptions that the, um, Boundary Review Board reviews. Uh, they're just based on legal descriptions, if they have been surveyed, they'll have that information. Um, but they don't, they're not required to, you know, it's like meets and balanced descriptions and such. But, you know, between now and when, the time we come back, we'll, we'll, by this particular, we'll look into this issue. When I annex somebody's property that doesn't want to be annexed, that's for sure.
Any other, any other discussion?
Yes, sir. How, how did my address get on this? That's, that's what I'd like to know, I mean, is this, because see that, those two parcel numbers used to be one, which was mine. Okay, so now that parcel number is separate and not to mine.
Right.
So how did my address get involved, is who put my address on there, that's what I'd like to know.
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, I suspect, I don't know for sure. Um, because I didn't pull this report, but I suspect that because the other parcel does not have an address, that your address has got.
I don't, I don't understand, because there's, there've been two separate parcel numbers for the last twelve to fifteen years.
Well, I, I can't.
And I don't understand that.
On the spot, but I'm obviously.
Well, who?
The answer, the answer is it's an inaccuracy at the county, that's all it is.
You know, I don't, I don't believe.
Well, when they, when they want to annex, they're telling you, here's a parcel number.
I'll tell you, so here's the process we use, when someone applies for annexation, they will, um, provide us a parcel number. We will pull it up on the county's website. And they have a property information sheet that fills in. I mean, just, again, I'm just speculating, I didn't pull this parcel.
Right.
But I think, I suspect that the address was incorrectly associated with your parcel number. That's about all I can tell you.
Basically what the computer did is look back and says, oh, this was one address before, we'll stick this add.
I suspect that's what happened.
Okay, yeah, I mean, because if this man used my address.
It has to be the, and, and it does have to be the property owner that does the application, all that.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, there's probably legal ramifications of these, um, saying that he's you and signed it for you.
Yeah.
So, this, but besides that, um, we will follow up, but we will follow up with you, sir, if you wish. If you want to leave your name and number, thank you, Cody.
I want to say something too, just to clarify, so. The prop- property owners are verified with the parcel number, so they have to provide legal documentation, title, ownership of the parcel number. And the parcel number, like you said, because it was probably one, there's no parcel on that parcel, it just pulls that one address probably from multiple parcels in that area. Similar, if you block off something before it develops, it all has one address until you subdivide it. So that's where you get that same addressing, why Morris Road doesn't have an address, because there's no house on it yet. So it's the same similar thing, but we will, we can take the address off because a parcel number does identify the correct parcel. Yeah, and I guess one last thing, uh, one of the first things we have to do, someone, when someone submits a petition to us. And they, they vow that this is their property, we are required to send it to the first county assessor. And that, there's a certification process that it goes through. So the assessor certifies the petition and says, this is the real property owner. So that's what they did for this person, now, again, I can't explain the address thing, but we'll definitely look into that.
I never received a letter of intent, I don't think so.
All right, Councilmember Hess.
Uh, sir, just to let you know how it came about, the description that was given, I just got done doing a parcel number lookup of that parcel right there. It tells the address it has, status address is one six three four five Railroad, Railroad East Southeast. Owners Anderson Daphne, and the address of said owner gives their address. So it's the county, that's how they have it listed.
Right.
And it's the county that has it listed that way, for whatever reason, uh, but I, but, you know, as I said. Uh, having done annexes in other locations, they will go out and they will make sure that appropriate property is the one.
Exactly, I understand that, yeah.
I want, I want to let you know where that information came from, that it came from the county assessors, uh, their tax assessor information.
Having me as own of the place anymore.
Councilmember Richardson.
I guess as I'm thinking about this, I'm starting to think about other things and I don't want to delay your time, I just want to get to the point, um. Well, I would hope that, why was this his first time hearing this news? When somebody applies for annexation, is there a process that says I got to let my neighbors know? I got to let my, you know, is, is there something like that in place? Because I think if I live next to somebody and they're going to develop the land, I would hope they'd tell me. Or I would hope that somebody would drop some knowledge, hey, we're doing this, Joe, hey, cool, thanks for telling me. The, the first time.
When they built that house back over there, they just built a new home over there. And I got a thing in the mail, and I'm at the county going, what is this? Oh, that's this guy over here, never, but then he said, oh, that's not you, but still they got me using me, but they put a new house in there. Nobody knew nothing.
Okay, so.
Snuck it in.
What I'm trying to get to is, if we're in this city and we're living together, we want to annex properties. Wouldn't we want to have some notification of our neighbors telling us or some, something of notification? But that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, um, and I would have to, I would have to look, I'm still getting familiar with the code. Typically, there is a notification requirement for property owners within a certain number of feet. You, you. We, we also, um, as you guys might remember from the study session, we did this, we had to post, we post notices on the properties, so there would have been notices around that property. Um, letters are mailed out to everyone within a three hundred radius, I believe, it's close radius, there's letters that were mailed out and I had proof of those, because I dropped most of those off myself. Um, that were mailed out to those owners, they could look like junk mail, so it might be like, City Yelm, screw this and throw it away. Um, and then we also held, I don't know how, this is our fourth meeting about these properties. And obviously, not everybody reads about public meetings and what's going on, but this public hearing also is posted in several places. So there's been a lot of notice of email, the mailers posting on the, uh, sites, posting on the actual places where the property is being annexed. So, I mean, we went out there and trumped through the forest to put some of these up and then put them out towards the streets so people could see them, so.
Councilmember Hess.
I was going to say, this is one of the things I've been bringing up is our notification process. We've been doing the intent, I, I mean, we've been doing the letter of the law, but not necessarily the intent. If you think about it, this year alone, we've had, um, a company. A development company come in saying that they found out at the last minute about a change that was occurring. We now have a property owner that, and I'm not saying that you didn't do your due diligence, I'm just saying that when I've been asking for. We need to find a way to truly notify our residents, which, um, unless he gets a water bill, he wouldn't, he wouldn't be notified by us. He would be notified by the county. It's, this is, as I said, this is the second time, and this is a, another one of those that's a major issue. Of people not knowing what's going on in our community, because for some reason, we are not notifying our residents. With the intent that it was supposed to be, we were holding to the letter of the law, that notification. And these are things that I'd like everybody to consider.
Okay, well, Councilmember Crossman, before we start, I do want to remind council, there has been a motion to second, this is all discussion of this vote. Um, Councilmember Crossman, go ahead.
I know, I know, um, the public notice signs, are those posted by the property owner or does the city do those?
We go out to the property and post them ourselves.
I've seen them.
Yeah, we put, we put, for this one, they were all.
I, I didn't go look at all the properties, it's something.
On this one or by me?
Yeah, there was one posted on the, I literally treasured out there and put it out there on that.
Is there a notice right down the middle of the field facing my place?
I, it's not there anymore, it was there four or five months ago for fifteen days. I, I trumped out there myself and put it out there on that, in the grass. Across the little dirt driveway, walked in the grass, dropped it out there.
So is this a mini, because I go with passion, I never saw that there.
All that, when you walk.
Alright, you guys, there's been a motion to second, there's been ample discussion, um. We're going to call for the vote, we'll just do a roll call vote, starting Councilmember Blair. Yay or nay?
No.
Councilmember Richardson.
No.
Councilmember Crossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Yes.
Who can carries. Thank you, council, and again, just a reminder, this will be brought back forth, um, multiple times, we got at least one for the, um. For the Boundary Review Board and they'll absolutely make sure that we're annexes, annex it, annexing the correct parcels. Um, that we aren't taking property that, of folks that don't want their property taken and everything is accurate. And then, council will still have an opportunity and the public will still have an opportunity again to discuss it further. Or, um, we actually do the annexation. Thank you for vigorous comments and conversations, um, we will now move on to item number eight. Thank you, Carrie. Uh, standing council committee reports, Public Safety Committee.
Okay, we had kind of a short meeting, um, Tony wasn't there for the court stuff, but the radar sign is being built, it's been ordered to be. Um, I had talked, they had talked last month about the chaplain program and started the chaplain program, but. Uh, Chief Carlson talked about, because they're in a consortium with other agencies, um, they have access to a chaplain at all times. So there's really no need at this point to spend the money to create an actual program. Um, there is a new hire, a lateral from Penn. That is state certified, it should be joining on April first. Um, a conditional offer has been made to another lateral. Uh, the Yelm PV social media is ramping up, they're getting a lot more views, so that's good. Um, the SROs are making an impact, uh, Brian Wharton, the superintendent, let Chief Carlson know that. Um, it's really working out well and they're doing, they're able to do things. Like, you know, being in the classrooms at the younger schools and reading to them, playing kickball. The hope is in the future, we have three right now, but the hope is to have more so that they can get them in the elementary schools and get those relationships started at a younger age. And that's it.
Alright, Councilmember Smith, Public Services Committee, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Crossman.
Um, in regards to the hiring of laterals, is there anything we're doing so it doesn't happen to us what happened to Tenino? That we sent.
Yeah.
Higher debacle.
I, I don't want to say that. We do a very rigorous background check and, um, a lot of different standards that might not necessarily be in Tenino. Um, so absolutely, we do a lot of those checks and, um, yeah, it's, it's pretty rigorous. Um, Chief, do you, Chief Stan, well, uh, he's administrative. And to talk about, do you want to address that too?
What was, I'm sorry, I was talking.
Oh, and he basically wants to know about why, if there's a situation, what our background, um, checks are, what, what our process.
Because I brought up the laterals and he's talking about what happened in Tenino, so he wanted to.
Yeah, so, um, I can't talk exactly what happened in Tenino.
No, no, but just the process that we have.
Yeah, so, uh, basically, most law enforcement agencies follow the same process. And so, um, as an example, in the city of Yelm, if you get hired by the city of Yelm. You also are, are cross-commissioned throughout Thurston County, because we follow the exact same background process as everybody else. Not all agencies follow that exact same process. Those agencies that don't follow that process are not cross-commissioned throughout the county. I'm not saying that's what happened in Tenino as far as their process, but I will say that our process, that we've always, uh, apply, you know, applied to our, our applicants. Is, uh, is as strict as you can get. I, I think it'll be interesting, the outcome of the, of the Tenino case in regards to what information could they access? And they just weren't allowed access to, um, because there's obviously very specific rules about that as well. As an agency, you can't protect, uh, an officer when they leave. Through some agreement, you, you, so that'll be, again, I don't want to say too much about it, but a- a- as that comes out, as it unfolds. What the background investigator had access to, what they were given access to, and what was, uh, withheld from them. Will be obviously the telling tale as far as who messed up where. So, anyway, um, I'm pretty confident that that wouldn't happen, uh, for us. Um, but again, uh, when you go to get information from an applicant from another agency, you are obviously limited to the information they give you. So if there was information that you're not giving, that kind of puts the, back on the agency that's not doing that. So, anyway, I'll, I'll just, I'll put that there, that helps, probably not, but.
Any other questions, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, Public Services Committee.
Uh, since the last meeting, the only new thing is, and I'm sure Director Colt will, uh, cover it, uh, when we get into the city reports. Uh, the lights have come in, and so that's going to be very exciting to see, I had the pleasure of, by pure accident, of going to visit, ask another question. Uh, got to see what they look like, I'm looking forward to seeing them put up in the city, and so that'll be really nice to see.
Yeah, very excited for that, it's, it's going to look great, going to light up our downtown park, um, yeah. Thank you for that good report, alright, moving on to the Finance Committee.
I was really impressed with the new layout. This was good, I had to ask Stephanie if this was new, and I, I don't know if you guys know, but you can go check on the agenda packet and look at the finances. You can look at and see how much money they're spending at O'Reilly's, you can see how much the guys are spending on tech, apparently they need to spend more money on tech because of failures with the life feed. That, but anyways, this is really good, you can even see, there's, there's even an invoice for drug tests, so that helps me feel good about the city. You know, we're doing due diligence, so thank you for this, 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 this layout and even, uh, James Blair confirmed, I said, I don't know if I've seen this before. And James said, hey, that's new, um, so if you guys are really interested to see what the city is spending their money on. Check out the agenda packet online, it is laid out very well, it leaves no mystery, even to the penny from the IRS. And I said, what's that one penny, Stephanie, she's like, hey, it's the IRS, they need to have it to the penny. So, um, again, when I see something like this, it gives me confidence that things are being done correctly. So thank you for that, just this whole layout was great, and I encourage people that are watching or people in this room. Look at these things, they're, uh, impressive to see how things are going, it just makes you, I don't know, kind of gives me confidence that people are doing a good job and everything's accounted for. So, that's what I like, so good job there.
Councilmember Richardson, any questions for him? Alright, we're going to go on to the mayor, administrator, city administrator, staff reports. He's administrator.
We've got a couple, the committee reports took multiple of them from me, so, um, that's great.
You can have it better.
They're supposed to do, fantastic. Uh, just a couple of things in the, from the Public Services Department, uh, we're pretty optimistic, we can break ground on the dog park next month. Promises by Director Colt.
You heard it. We'll do groundbreaking sharing with you next month, regardless if we can break ground on it.
We've just got the federal money, so.
We're actually waiting to see if we need approval from council, um, for the grant itself, any construction costs, of course, to be brought to the council to receive the grant. So, but after that, we're building.
Yep, and then, uh, just a couple of things from the Finance Department, uh, our Finance Director, uh, is working with the Auditor's Office. We're hosting a VARs training on Thursday, uh, for, what, seventy-five attendees across the state.
Axed out.
Axed out, our training at the community center.
It's for.
Our training, finance.
Budgeting and accounting and reporting system.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I can say that. This is the, uh, the Auditor's Office first live training in two and a half years, roughly, so.
Your little, you know.
It'll be right here in Yelm all day long, so, um, very good work from that. And then, uh, the only other thing I will add, and, and this is for, uh, everybody, uh, but in the last utility bill, um, we put in a note on the utility bill. Reminding people about council.
Uh, but in the last utility bill, um, we put in a note on the utility bill, reminding people about council and study sessions and when we are. But we were able to plug that in, because there is a little space on the bills to add that note, so.
Oh, extra loss.
I love that, and that was
Actually, Eric resets.
Yes, Erica did that, she put it in, so that's all I got.
All right, um, the only thing I have is that budgets will, for the state will come out here probably next week, hopefully, and so we'll, the proposed budget, so we'll see, um, on Yom Fairs with our, um, bypass, that's what we're waiting on, basically, in the governor's budget, he delays it a little bit more. Um, I've been hearing good things, Representative Marcus is fighting hard for it, I've been fighting hard with other legislators, transportation committee, and so crossing our fingers, hoping it's, um, gonna be built next year, so. Other than that, Councilmember Blair, many reports.
Uh, the most important thing that I'm gonna bring up is, I'm assuming next meeting, we're gonna see that ordinance. Uh, it's regarding the surplus money from the LID, Gillian LID. You, we will know exactly how much money is left over from that, that we have. I believe there's a little bit more that's still due, that will come in at a later date. But I just want to reiterate, I think it needs to go towards paying off debt. That's all I got to say on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Blair, Councilmember Richardson.
Uh, not too much, um, we attended the chamber forum today, and, uh, thank you, city, for showing up and giving a good report, Todd, appreciate that. I'm just trying to keep it city.
All right. Oh, yeah? Thank you, Councilmember Richardson, Council, Councilmember Crossman.
I'm good.
Thank you for your work, Councilmember Smith.
This was my busy week, or last week, so I had, uh, Southeast Thurston Fire Authority, um, they are still on the hunt for the Quint truck, which is the big truck with the ladder, because we're building higher buildings. And it's, it's a difficult process, it's very expensive, they do find used ones, but they get snatched up, you know, throughout the country, so. Um, they are still in the hiring process, and it was just interesting, it's very similar to the police department, they do that, you know, same, testing the background. And they're always hopeful to find laterals as well. Um, calls and transports are up for the month of February, but the total year-to-date is down. Uh, TCOM staffing is still a bit concerned, they, um, they are still down, um, eight FTEs completely. Um, they do have, I did post the job posting on my council page, there is no vaccine required, which is nice, that was a question that was asked. Uh, let's see, they've been having some issues with some of the new equipment, some, and I'm not sure exactly what this is, but a house tone in a when a fire call goes out, there's a house tone, and those weren't working correctly, they hopefully found the problem with that. Um, and that was that for that, uh, and then I went to the community conversations, um, that was a nice big turnout at Pharrell's, and that's it.
Yeah, huge turnout, actually.
It was, yeah, it was.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Hess.
Uh, I have meetings that are coming up, so hopefully next time, next meeting, I'll have more information for you. Uh, do you want to add, though, that I, uh, visited the senior center, uh, with their meeting that they had this week? And they are, uh, they're wanting to know more about what's going on with the city, and I remind them that uh, we are here to help them out with the knowledge base of how they might be able to get grants, funding to help them out with whatever projects they want to do, and that we as a city are here to support them as best we can, uh, in all proper forms, no promises have been made, just we help advocate and give them that knowledge base to help them out, other than that, nothing else.
And we have in the past, um, helped them with their projects, with their requests for the legislative requests, um, that go through city. Um, thank you, Councilmember Hess, Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, I, uh, am really excited for the already mentioned Red Cross Sound the Alarm. That is at the end of April on the twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday, and we're also inviting volunteers to sign up for um, canvassing, which will be done two weeks prior, and then the day of will be going from nine to two setup at the Public Works Building. Uh, and lunch or breakfast will be provided, and there are weekly planning meetings with Evan, um, who's a South Town volunteer in, I think it's this title. So thank you, Larry and Brad, for that and being here today. Uh, the second thing was the community conversations, it was seriously the best, yeah, I think I've counted in my head, there was over twenty-four people in attendance, which is the most it's, it's not a huge number, but it was a huge number, um, and new faces and old faces, and new organizations and new connections were made literally from that, and, um, I look forward to the next month. And that's what I've got.
Be careful who we call an old face.
All right.
Councilmember Ritz, thank you so much, Councilmember Kaminsky. Um, apart from the other meetings that were already discussed, I did attend today's chamber lunch, which was excellent. I also attended on Saturday night, the Dollars for Scholars, which was a lovely evening, I think it was the only city representative there, and I got called out on it. Why wasn't anybody there with me, so perhaps next year, we can get our own table, were you there?
Oh, I was in Canada, be celebrating my marriage.
Right, that's fair. So maybe next year, we can get a table for the city, because it was really a nice evening. Um, Arts Commission, as per the request of the commission in our study session, they're looking at look finding, seeing if you can find a more local artist, and just reviewing prices, and then I'm sure they'll come back to us. And hopefully, this is for a wind feature in the city, hopefully, we can put that together, it'd be amazing. Um, and then I did attend the chat event at Pharrell's. And, um, Holly and Ashley and I were called ahead of time. And while we, after we were there and had our lunch, we received a little gift from Walmart. They reached out to us, uh, because it was International Women's Day, and they wanted to honor the women on council, which I thought was very, very sweet. And there was no fanfare, there were no speeches, there was no press, it was nothing like that, it was just like, oh, we're going to our car, here's a little gift basket, and I have to say, it was just the goodwill and the kindness just made me feel fantastic, so wanted to publicly thank Rachel and Dalton and her team for their gifts from Walmart in Yom. Yes.
Don't deserve recognition, yes. All right, thank you, council, um, there is no executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, that was a quick one, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Good meeting.